Something. No. But we will call the meeting to order at six thirty. This is the September fifth Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission of North St. Paul. Can we have staff do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Wise.
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez.
Here.
Commissioner Kane Burbak.
Here.
Commissioner Gadboy.
Here.
Commissioner Mewick.
Here.
Commissioner Rothie.
Here.
And Chair Leese.
Here.
Thank you.
And we have with us.
City Council Liaison, Mr. Nordby.
Here.
Yes, indeed.
That was on my next, next, next title.
Okay. With that, we have a fairly short agenda tonight, so we'll slam through it. Does anybody have anything to add or subtract or change on the agenda? And if not, I entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion from Commissioner Wise, second from Commissioner Rothie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Meeting minutes from August one. Let's approve the meeting minutes. Anybody have comments? I have one. It's on page six of the packet. The public hearing comments from Mr. Schmal. I believe it's the last sentence. I believe the word "not" is in the sentence twice.
Double negatives.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
We will make that change.
Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the August first Planning Commission meetings. Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A motion from Commissioner Rothie, a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Wise. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is open to the public. I do not see any public present. Pretty quiet meeting tonight. So I don't think we'll be hearing from the public tonight. We do not have any public hearings on the agenda. We have a commission business to discuss the Margaret Street Commons RFP. With that, Mr. Graham, would you present?
Absolutely. So, thank you first and foremost. At our last meeting in August, we briefly discussed an opportunity before us to look at a future redevelopment area, commonly called Margaret Street Commons Site, which is located right across the street from us. And I had mentioned that, you know, we had some interest from a couple of local developers, which is always a great sign. But kind of seeing some of that interest, it's a good idea to go through an RFP process so that it's transparent, fair, everybody has a shot at it, all that kind of stuff. So I mentioned that at our September meeting, I would come back with a draft RFP. That's where we are here this evening. So the property in question has, again, across the street, has lots of advantages, a lot of close proximity to a lot of different great features, including obviously police and fire right across the street. It's very close to North St. Paul High School. It's walkable downtown, several bars and restaurants, nearby parks, other amenities. Also, it's located on a public transit line, which is always really, really good. And also has obviously great access to regional highways. The site is a former home of two dental offices. One of the buildings still stands, the other was demolished. The site is empty of any current use currently. The existing structure was reviewed in 2022 and deemed substandard per Minnesota Statute four sixty-nine point one seven four subdivision ten. This is a good thing. Helps us with future ability to finance any particular project with, with any future developer. So that, that is a good thing. We did conduct a phase one environmental report back in 2019, and the report did recognize three what are called REC's, recognized environmental conditions, the previous dental uses. And also there was a long former dry cleaning operation and then another dry cleaning operation that was actually adjacent to that property. Obviously, dry cleaning is not the best environmental uses. And so that, that phase one did note that there were likely contributed to those REC's at that location. Otherwise, the, the site is served by North St. Paul Utilities. One interesting thing, though, with the, with that site, there is a natural gas pipeline and overhead power electrical lines that run north-south. But additionally, there's a forty-eight inch public storm sewer line along the west side that will likely impact some of the design aspects. So that is something that I was, I made sure to be very frontal in the RFP so that developers are aware of that. And usually if, if we get developers interested, they're going to reach out to us anyways and gain more information because those are things that they need to know about. The site is currently zoned MU one, which is downtown mixed use, which permits a sort of a wide range of commercial and residential uses. I listed what those are here. I don't think I need to go over those two in detail. The, in 2022, the city did conduct a housing assessment by Maxfield, and that assessment indicated that the city could accommodate roughly nine hundred and fifty-five new housing units in the next five to six years, which is a combination of ownership and rental, but also potentially three hundred and sixty-nine units for senior-specific housing. So they believe that the demand is there. So this, this is going to try to drive that bus of what kind of uses we think are going to be appropriate at that site. In the downtown redevelopment master plan, this area calls for continued growth, obviously in the downtown area, and continued increased demand for services such as retail and restaurants. We are hoping to have retail and/or service, other services at the street level with upper floors for housing. That is typically, you know, one of those classic mixed-use developments that we would like to see in this area. But again, you know, a lot of, a lot of what developers are going to come forward with is going to be market-driven, what, what they feel that they can actually sell, right? So we will be sure to connect with any developers on, on that level. But again, we're, we're looking for pedestrian-friendly character. Small, you know, we're, we're designing it for a urban downtown environment. And again, adequate parking is going to be a, a big thing, especially under building parking whenever possible. So that'll be probably a major component as well. I did throw together just real rough dates for some of the proposed requirements as outlined. All of them are movable. This is just, just to get you all thinking sort of in, in one clear direction about how and when this would all happen. Essentially, you know, we're looking for the Planning Commission to review the draft tonight. I'll make any edits that the commission has, and then we'll bring it to the City Council for approval to post on the seventeenth of September. We'll post it the very next day. And then we're looking for submissions due right around the first of the year sometime. We got major holidays coming up, obviously, towards the end of the year. That kind of complicates things. So longer timeframe is always better, and it allows developers really to dig in and get some more information and develop a cohesive plan. But then after that, you know, we'll take the first part of, you know, roughly the first quarter. Staff will review any submissions that we receive. My thought would be, I've typically, in cities that I've worked for, we, we usually generate a sort of review committee to kind of flesh out what, what's good, what's bad, and then make a recommendation to the City Council. Typically, we would have presentations to the City Council by developers that we, that we like and, and those projects that we think will work there. And then eventually, we'll select a developer to work with and hopefully begin working towards development contract and all that kind of stuff. So the, the RFP will be posted on the city's website and the League of Minnesota Cities website. That's where ninety-nine percent of things that RFPs are posted, that developers will, will look for. We could place an ad in the Minnesota Star Tribune. It is Minnesota Star Tribune, not the Minneapolis now. Yep. Star Tribune, if we want to. I do know of the Finance and Commerce Industry website that I know a lot of developers often routinely look forward to. We could post it there as well. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Happy to answer any questions on anything specific in the RFP this evening.
I have a question. Is, is there a standard procedure that you know of with regard to our action? Not tonight, it's just discussion.
Tonight is just a discussion?
But when it comes to evaluating developers and such, is there any official action that the Planning Commission would take?
I, I think every city is different, naturally, of course. What I typically have seen is the Planning Commission will either set up a committee, staff and, you know, two, three, not four, because then you have a quorum. But usually two or three members of, of the Planning Commission to help review everything. At, at, at that point, you know, you would select three, four of them or how many ever you think would be a viable product. They would come to the Planning Commission, present, present their, their plan for a development. The Planning Commission would then typically select two, three, depending on what, you know, what they feel is necessary. And then that would get forwarded to the City Council for further presentations.
So we would make a recommendation to the City Council as to who the shortlist is?
Yes. That's, that's how I have seen it done in the past.
That seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Riley, and it's my understanding that if that's the process that takes place, a scoring system, that the small group would be used, would have to be available to be made public once the decision is made?
Correct.
Okay.
Question about the site, actually two things. One is, since there is the mention of the storm sewer, and there would be an easement associated with that, do you think it would be, make sense to show its approximate location on the aerial view?
I think that would be a good idea.
Just some kind of representation, even if it's just a line of approximate center?
Yeah, if you, if you look at its page.
Because if it's on the property line, then the, then the impact is more significant. But if it's west of the site location boundary that you have on here?
Yeah, on page three of the, of the RFP, you can actually, you know, you can see that line that runs north-south.
Oh, that's the easement?
That's technically the easement.
Okay.
But I can, I can superimpose that onto what is page two.
Yeah.
Give you a little bit better view.
Yeah, I think it would be.
The page two is just trying to give you the general site location, but I can.
Even if you, even if you use the lines that are on page three, page three, and put a little horizontal note.
Yes.
Or a vertical note that says storm location or something like that.
Certainly will do that.
Or maybe color blue.
Yeah, something that, that identifies it.
Yep.
It's just helpful, I think, for clarity. And then the other question I had is, is there any consideration or would there be consideration of? Because it seemed like there was some possibility that maybe there's an interface with the city parking lot. That would there be potential for, shall we say, a larger development utilizing some or all of that parking lot, then accommodating parking in part of the development? That sort of thing. Is, is that a feasible option for a developer if they would be interested in doing it? Should we present it as an option?
It, it says the adjacent surface parking lot just west of the subjects that could be potentially incorporated into the redevelopment.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's a mention of it? Should it be more of a mention?
Yeah.
It's, I, it's the only thing I'm asking.
Beef up that mention a little bit.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, or could you even show it maybe as like a?
Optional.
A dashed line.
Dash area behind there or something like that.
Yeah.
It would be really nice if the site didn't get so skinny right there. But, you know, if it was, if I was serious about doing a development and I wanted it to be bigger, a negotiation with the adjacent parcel to do a little cut off of their corner would definitely be in order. And then, you know, I'm not sure what happens with the storm sewer easement. But I'm just trying to open up, what kind of opportunities might there be that, that will create variables for developers to, to be able to say, hey, well, if we did it this way, you know, maybe it works better in their financial picture or something like that. So just being clear about what, what kind of options there might be because if it, if there's a possibility it's more than this rectangle, then maybe it's, you know, like, like Cameron said, maybe it's a dashed line or something like that, that.
Well, I just want to be clear on this. Are we talking about the parking lot on the south side of that? Or are we talking about the parking area to the west of there?
South.
South. Okay, what is the parking area to the west of there?
That's the school.
That's the school, okay.
Yep.
So is there any opportunity that they could take some of that property on that side as well?
I, I asked that very same question of Public Works. The answer is potentially. The problem is, you still have that easement running right through it.
You still have the storm sewer.
Even if you add, you know, even if, if they were to purchase a slice of that property, it's not, you can construct anything over the top of that. So that, it really confines the site.
You know, and not that you can't, not that you can't move a storm sewer, but.
It'd be costly, but you could.
There's costs associated with it, obviously.
If you mention underground parking with that storm sewer, what's that going to do for underground parking? And what's that going to do for?
You don't know, yeah.
Yeah, so parking would, typically you would have, the building would be up against the, the Margaret Street in this case. Access to the parking would be from the back. And then there would be a, it, it would, it would be adjacent to that sewer line, but it would have to stay to the east.
Mm-hmm.
Just out of curiosity, would the, would the easement? What I'm picturing in my mind is, could they build like twin buildings and just have a grass area in between them? And, you know, maybe they connect them with a couple of pedestrian bridges or something like that? Would that kind of idea be possible?
Anything is possible. I'll put it that way.
If you've got enough money, yes.
There, there's your, and I was going to follow it up with, it depends on how much money they would like to spend and how much the building would cost. But yes. Yep.
So can you explain what is the impacts of the environmental?
Certainly. So with, with the phase one showing, let me pull up my.
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm curious what kind of, hmm, impacts that may have on a developer's interest.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it's, it, it, there's good and bad to it, right? The bad is that there are recognized environmental concerns. That's bad. The good news is, that opens up a floodgate of grant opportunities at the state and federal level. So I think we would be, be very much in play there. And we, the city staff would work in concert with a developer to apply for those and, and get those. It, depending on the level of contamination, I've seen where you have to dig out every inch of dirt and then bring a new fill and drop it in, or some sort of a vapor barrier. I mean, it really depends on what we're exactly, we're talking here and how long it's been present there. You know, I, I've worked on projects before, you know, the typical one is a former gas station site, you know, where they have underground tanks. They're there for years and years and years. They leak, and then, you know, of course, it does just stay right there. It's all over the place, naturally. And one of the projects that I worked on, we had, we had to remove, dig out everything and, and bring in all new fill. And that was costly, but we got grant money for it. So, you know, the, the, the former dry cleaner's uses are concerning. Those aren't hazardous materials. But I, I don't think that it would be anything that would preclude a development from happening here.
And it was just a phase one, so.
And we have, I think we have.
If there was cleanup to be done, there would have to be further, more detailed soil borings and other.
There was a limited phase two done.
Was there?
Yep.
That's stated in here, and I missed it.
Yeah, on page five, sort of at the top, the second paragraph. We did complete that in 2019.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So we, we do have that information. It's, it was a limited phase one, so it wasn't a full, but we have something.
Okay, but there's data.
Yes, there is.
That they can.
That would be made available to any developer who's interested, for sure.
Of course, on the other hand, too, that if they have to excavate to take contaminated soil out, that gives them a head start on the underground.
Building their underground parking, absolutely.
Right.
Yep.
I think out of all the projects I've worked on in the Twin Cities, more than half have had a problem like this.
Yep.
Very common, and it's.
Especially in older communities.
Yeah. It's amazing how many dry cleaners there must have been.
I know.
Because they're everywhere, evidently.
And they just didn't care what they did with their disposable contaminants. Yeah, just, oh, throw it out back, whatever.
But it's, it's, I would think any developer that's looking to do sort of a, you know, multifamily mixed-use development would have already dealt with that on.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think, I think the RFP looks good. I would, the one addition I would add in when you're talking about the, the site context and the, the opportunities there, mention the Gateway Trail. That's a huge.
It is in there.
Oh, is it?
It is, yeah. I can't remember where, but it's here.
It's right over Development. But it says blocks from the Gateway Trail, which makes it seem like it's further away from the trail than it is.
Yeah, it's.
It's a block.
It's pretty much a block, yeah. Might be a long block, but it's pretty much a block.
I can, I can, I can change that.
But that's a.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I totally missed.
It's in there, and I can't remember where.
Well, you might want to just go ahead and put like a slightly enlarged area map that shows like three or four blocks around.
Good point.
That way you could mark the trail and you could also show the.
And even that it's, it's within walking distance to the lake.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can certainly just.
That's a good idea.
I can, I can add a little bit more to development opportunities, for sure.
There's a lot of amenities in North St. Paul.
Maybe, yeah, maybe an enlarged or a smaller scale plan would be in order.
Yeah, like page one, he has a little more.
Yeah, the, the cover, the cover page has sort of an enlarged.
Yeah.
Kind of blown back a little bit further view. Because I, I wanted to show thirty-six. I wanted to show the high school. I wanted to show the, the trail. And I purposely put a blue line on the, on the trails.
Maybe, maybe it's good enough.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would say focus it in a little bit more so that maybe you showed up, maybe, so you showed the high school on the far western side.
Yeah.
You know, that would show enough of what's close by.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you would want to maybe catch McKnight because that shows the main, I mean, that's the main entrance exit off of thirty-six.
Yeah, I can, I can play with that map a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not a problem.
Couple, I don't know.
Sure.
This is a good one.
I like the fact that you show both McKnight and Division Street on that.
Yep.
Yes. But maybe zoom in and do something that's, that's.
Maybe three layers, like this one.
Maybe enlarge it to, uh, by about fifty percent?
Yep, I can play with it.
Something like that.
How long did it take? We were looking, you know, September, October, November, September, January. How long did it take, like, the last developments that we have downtown here? Like, like our, our developers, like, just chomping at the bit to get and find these sorts of parcels at cities? Is that long? Like, I don't know how long it takes. Are you going to end up with a dozen in four months?
You're going to end up with two? I, I think, I think the, I think the climate is a lot better than it was certainly two, three years ago, for sure. You know, in my previous city, we, we were going through a RFP process, and I couldn't barely get one or two to respond to an opportunity. Just the financial climate was not there. It's getting better. And I do know of a couple, a couple of developers that I've kind of like, hey, we may be having an opportunity here, and they're very interested. And I sort of kind of also at the same time saying, hey, how's, how's the climate? How's the financial climate for them specifically? And they said it's getting better. Construction costs are still insane.
They are.
We're hoping that'll get better in the next six, you know, who knows what's going to happen after the election? That's obviously a, a big driver of it. But I'm, I'm hoping that by the time we go through this process, and that's another reason why I wanted to push it past the first of the, at least the first of the year to try to get a little bit better situation. Yeah.
I'm, I, I look at that, and I wonder if that's enough time. I, I have no idea, like, so I'm just curious.
I think it's good that it's after the holidays.
Yeah.
Because if people are really trying to put some information together and the holidays can, can be that buffer zone.
Honestly, from mid-Jan, or mid-November and on, developers are usually working about two weeks, the first two weeks of December. That's it. I mean, they're, they're basically off for Thanksgiving, and then they're off for Christmas and New Year's. It's, that's, and, and, you know, if we, if we get to a point where, you know, maybe we don't have a lot of responses or ones that we're not really comfortable with, we can always extend it. It's, we're not beholden to the dates that we set, you know?
Commissioner Leese, if I could ask two questions, I'd be grateful. The first one is, what, with this body, when we redid the plat lines, didn't we get rid of the triangle that's on page three?
The triangle?
I think we talked about it.
It's straight left of twenty-three seventy-five?
I remember talking about it. I don't know if any official action was taken.
A little zero? Yep.
Yep. I, I, I thought we voted on it in the council.
It, we may have, I mean, this was, sorry, before my time, but.
Well, and this, it might, it might be that this is an old, old data, yeah.
Data maybe hasn't been updated quite yet.
And then my second question was, is although we called it a school to the west, my understanding is that's private ownership? And that person was willing, had had interest in subdividing his lot to work on this whole thing, but because it's private ownership, we called it a school, but I'd be.
It's, it's a private school.
Right, I'd be concerned about indicating that that could be part of the scope.
No, it, it could.
Unless we had permission from him.
Well, it could be part of the scope if the developer is prepared to negotiate that.
Right, I just didn't want to make it look like we were offering private land.
No, no, obviously, yeah, can't do that.
Have they been spoken to?
I, I personally have not yet, but it's something that.
Oh, if I, if I was a developer, I'd at least have a conversation.
Oh, absolutely, you're always looking to expand the site.
You know, and find out, hey, what, what are our choices here?
Yeah, I mean, because in the grand scheme of things, this is a pretty small site. I mean, I'll be perfectly.
Yeah.
It is a small site. So, you know, and the developers that I've already kind of spoken to a little bit quietly about this, they have already asked, how can we make it bigger? So they're aware of that.
Yep. The other thing that I would, and, and I don't think it means changing the RFP, but when it comes time to evaluate developer proposals, I would strongly suggest that we encourage mixed use. Don't, don't proceed with something that's residential only unless, unless that's all you get.
Yeah, right.
You know, then maybe you consider it. But I, I think the mixed-use component is really important here.
Well, and, and all of our planning documents that I have seen.
They all say that.
They all say. They all say that.
Yep, and you put it in the RFP, so I was appreciative of that.
I was going to say exactly the same thing. To add on to that, you know, there's always the little, I don't know what the right word is, but a way to get around it, if you're a developer, is you say, it's live-work.
Yeah.
So, it's actually a residential unit, but hey, you know, you can start a little store there. And that seems to be what we've seen a lot of.
Yeah.
And I think that's fine, but the issue is that, you know, retail is really needed here, at least, you know, sort of daily active retail. And obviously, nothing that we're going to decide, because it's really what the market is going to want, but I think, you know, going to your point, like, it would be great to see actual retail, not a sort of retail in a disguise, or residential unit in disguise.
Sure.
But, yeah, that's certainly up to the market to decide that. But I had a really interesting discussion with the owner of Sweetie's at the last car show, and we were talking about, I was basically saying, isn't it great, all the new people coming into town? And she said, it's great, but we need more retail, because we need more, you know, reason for people to come here. There are people here, but we need more people, reason for people to stay here. So, that's just what sort of made me think about that. And it was a really good point, because in my mind, I always kind of think people, you know, make the momentum, but you have to have places for them to go, too, so.
Yeah, I've got family who use the Gateway all the time, and they're really frustrated that there's nothing in North St. Paul that really draws them off a trail to like get a coffee. There's nothing, they would like to be able to get a quick bite to eat that's light. They don't necessarily want a sit-down restaurant, or they just want more.
Yeah, a little quick deli kind of a thing would be really nice.
Yeah, or a sandwich shop, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or a coffee shop that's-
And crossing, crossing the highway to go to the Dairy Queen is challenging. More challenging than one wants to try.
They don't want to take their life in their hands to get an ice cream cone at Dairy Queen.
We get a sandwich shop down there, maybe they could have a bicycle ride-up window.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, the city parking lot there on the south side, would there be a possibility of doing some sort of a land swap or use swap, so that, you know, we could give a developer the ability to develop the, that lot, as long as they exchanged parking in their facility for that?
I'll answer it the same way, answer, anything is possible.
Okay. Well, let me rephrase that. Would that be looked upon with any degree of favor, or do you think that that would be a really rough sell? Maybe that's the better way to put it. But I'm thinking more in terms of the city and not the developer's standpoint.
If as part of this, we're requesting that they are looking to do underground parking, where's the only entrance you can get underground parking on this parcel? That's it right there.
Yeah.
Because you're bound by Margaret, you're bound by the driveway of the school, you're bound by the easement on the west. That's the only area you're going to be able to get under that building.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's almost necessary that they have access to that.
Yeah.
Because you got to dig it down, it's an underground, you know, you have to have that ramp.
I think it was about a year ago, we saw a proposal for this site, a mixed-use building, and they had it set up, like Riley said, where the drive aisle was behind the building, away from that easement. And I think it only left, you know, it was a really narrow piece left over for the parking. I think not, if it was even two lanes, I don't think it was even that, but-
Even at that, it's going to be, that easement runs all the way to the south edge of that.
A ramp takes up an incredible amount of space.
It does, yeah.
Takes up a lot of space, especially here in Minnesota, you can't have it too steep, you're going to have disasters in the winter times. It's, you got to use up a lot of space. So, I suspect that any developers, what we speak to, are going to, are going to try to creatively figure out how they can make that work.
They're almost going to have to go in off that alley.
Yeah.
And I've got friends in Woodbury that are in a condo with underground parking, and they put in a ramp that was so steep, they have to have a heated ramp during the winter times.
Yeah. In Minneapolis, a lot of them are that way, because they're so tight.
They're so tight, yeah. Yeah, one good thing is developers are really creative, especially if they can get a little bit of land here, a little bit of land here, they can, they're pretty creative folks, so, sorry, the architects are.
The developers need to be creative with the financing.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, I think I've got my list of edits I'll make. Any other, any other edits?
I think you put a lot into this, Riley.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will update that, and we'll have it on the council agenda for the 17th.
Excellent. Well, our last agenda item is reports. Commissioners, reports? Let's start with Stephanie.
None for me.
None for you.
I actually have two things I'd like to bring up. One is kind of a piece of old business regarding the school-constructed home. About two weeks after we had that meeting, I saw, and I think it was in the Business Journal, a developer who was advertising homes slightly to the north of here, starting at $375,000 for a, I think it was a 1,400-square-foot home. And so, that, you know, our developer from the school was saying that it was hard to do anything for less than a half million. I do understand economies of scale and that type of thing, but on the other hand, you know, if they're using a lot of student labor, doesn't that help exchange that? So, I just wanted to follow up on a push for them to try to get something closer to the $400,000 range, that's a little more affordable for a young family starting out. Because I figure, you know, this, this other location was, I looked it up, it was only about 10 or 12 miles to the north of here, if I remember right. And it doesn't seem like that much of a difference should make, you know, $100,000 price difference. I still feel like they're overbuilding a little bit for a starter home. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, for consideration by the city council, we still, I should say, MnDOT's, in working with Met Transit, still has not decided on a terminal for the Purple Line, and they're still considering taking the Purple Line over to Century College. And so, I'd like to recommend that the city council consider a letter to Met Transit, saying that if they do go over there, that they should try to establish a stop in North St. Paul. Of course, I realize it all depends as to what route they take. If they take three, if they take 694 over, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but, you know, Maplewood Mall is kind of in the middle between 36 and 694, so there is a possibility they might bring it down to 36, and if they knew there was support for that, that might help us get something that was a little more express. Not that the 64 is a bad route, it's actually got very good service on it, but, you know, something that was an express route, and it might even give them the opportunity, if they ever do do an express bus out to Stillwater, and I don't know that they will, but it's something that they've talked about, it might give them, you know, a location for a hub. So, anyway, like I say, I just kind of wanted to suggest that the city council might consider putting together a letter like that. Thank you, and that's all I've got.
I have nothing.
How about you, Mr. Alvarez?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I also have nothing.
All right, well, golly, I must have something to talk about. No, I actually, it was funny, I was trying to take some notes about the agenda, and I had come up with something, and I thought about it, and then it went.
You referring to the parade coming up?
There is a parade coming up. I don't know what the date is, however.
19th?
The 19th.
Of September? Not October, September.
The 19th. It's the, um-
I believe that's on a Thursday.
Yeah, 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 that's right.
13 days, 22 hours, 52 minutes, 21 seconds. We have a nice counter on the North St. Paul website.
There you go.
Down to the parade.
There's also a little parade that's going to happen from the VFW to the Vets Park that, I don't remember the date, and I feel guilty in that regard, since my wife is helping to organize it. Sorry, Carrie. So, I'm not sure when that is, but it is, it is happening this fall.
When is the last car show? Is it this Friday or next Friday, or later?
It's the 20th, the day after the parade.
It's the day after the parade.
Thank you.
My husband cares deeply about that.
Yes, it's the day after the parade.
Car show.
Is anyone here walking in the parade like last year?